So hopefully, you know, it's a great group.
Probably more needed now than it was before.
It is.
Bob?
Mr. Mayor?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Fine.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Commissioner?
Jeremy Farmer.
Robert, how you doing?
Good. Stay like today in a short meeting?
Are you in town Thursday?
Yeah.
No, I should have been in. I saw it there in Oak Park and thought about stopping.
Let me see what I got. I think I got a ribbon cutting.
Nine thirty-two eleven.
Oh, yeah. I got ribbon cutting in the afternoon. Nine thirty-two eleven? You want me to do the ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
Let me see. You out of town?
Yeah.
What is media day? Did I get something like that?
Basically, no. Basically, you just go to the counter and answer questions. They're gonna answer all the questions.
I'm gonna do. So student? So student?
Amen.
One of your constituents.
He hasn't told yet. He hasn't told yet.
Where's the sound? I'll look at it.
Take a look at it, let me know. Okay, you ready? Son? I gotta gavel here. Your fingers. Good evening and welcome to the February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen Lawrence City Commission Meeting. We don't have any recognitions or proclamations this evening, but Mike, you wanna point something out today?
I did. Mayor, coming down this evening and yesterday, as the weather's turned nice, a little bit nicer than what it was two weeks ago today, noticed that there's a lot of people out exercising, walking, riding bikes, all the fun stuff that we do. And just a kind of a word of caution to everybody, watch for people who are out doing things. You know, folks that are out exercising and stuff, watch for cars, just because pedestrians may have the right of way. It's important to make sure everybody stops before you step out and, you know, just wanna everybody to be safe. So, special note to everybody to just stop and think, those cars are heavy and bones take a while to heal up.
They do. All right, very good. And the next item on the consent agenda, or on the agenda is the consent agenda, and all matters listed on the consent agenda will be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there an item that a member of the city commission would like removed from the consent agenda? Is there an item that a member of the public would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of claims to vendors?
So moved.
Of, wait, let me say the amount, just in case. Three million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Motion by Commissioner Reardon, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next item is the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. A couple of items from our Planning and Development Services Department this week. You see the two thousand fourteen monthly report on building construction, started off with a healthy number on single-family residences. Obviously, we watched that to gauge the work in that important construction industry. And also, there were a number of multimodal study projects that are coming from our MPO. I know a couple of commissioners serve on that and are familiar with this. I would commend the summary of those studies to your reading, the studies on the commuter park and ride study, the fixed route transit and pedestrian accessibility study, and then a countywide bikeway system plan. I think a number of good reports, we'll be looking at them as we take a look at possible budget recommendations for two thousand fifteen. You'll be getting those a little bit more formally, and if you've got questions on them, we'll be happy to respond.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay, thanks, Dave. The next item are the regular agenda items, and I'd like to ask everyone to please silence their cell phones, and if there's any problem with doing so, just quickly turn it off. And then, I don't have my... During public comment, the general nature here and the regular agenda items, you'll have four minutes total to speak. At three minutes and thirty seconds, you'll hear this noise, and that'll be your sign to please start wrapping up your comments. First item on the agenda is to consider approving a site plan for Restruct Design Studio.
Good evening, I'm Mary Miller, current planner. And this item, this site plan is located at eleven forty-six Haskell Avenue. It has been before you, just recently, you had the, it shows the subject property here at the corner of Haskell and Twelfth Street. And this has been before you, just recently, we had a rezoning request. The property was rezoned to the IL or Light and, limited industrial district in November of two thousand thirteen. And that zoning was conditional. It was conditioned to restrict the uses, to uses that would be seen to be compatible with the nearby residential uses. And it also required city commission approval of site plans, which is why the site plan is before you today. The proposed uses, construction, sales and services, and manufacturing and production limited, are both uses that are permitted in this district. The property has been platted. It was part of the Boroughs Creek Edition, which was preliminary platted in October of two thousand thirteen. And this is gonna be platted in phases, so the subject property was phase one, and it was platted in January of this year. This is the detail of the site plan, which shows the changes that are gonna be made to the site. And I thought I would go through and just compare this with the existing site to show you the differences. The staff report went through in great detail all the changes in the number of buffer yards and landscaping, so I won't go into that. Primarily, if we look along Haskell, the access is gonna stay the same. However, there will be landscaping added on both sides of the access drive. This is to improve the streetscape of the property. The parking area will be paved, and it will have the ADA parking marked, which is an improvement. To the north, we have two very old buildings that are gonna be removed, and a parking area will be installed up to the north for the rest of their onsite parking that's required. And to the south of the building, the access, if you can see it here on this graphic, along Haskell, is a very short curb area, and then the access is open from here over to here. And this is being closed, as shown here on the site plan. There'll be a narrow strip installed here to close that access point up. And that will improve the traffic circulation on the site. Other changes that are being made are more on the other side of the site. There will be a fence installed, they'll have security fencing, and that will be installed around the entire perimeter. They're gonna be reusing the metal fencing that's along Twelfth, that'll be taken away from where it's currently now along the residential property and this property, and it'll be used to provide security fencing. Where it's visible from the street right of way or from the adjacent residences, it will be designed to be more aesthetically pleasing. It will be panels of that metal fencing alternated with wood panels, and this is compliant with the industrial design guidelines, and it's also consistent with the way Restruct Restruct does business, they reuse materials. So that's appropriate for this property. And as you can see in the site plan, they do have the buffer yard landscaping. A type-three buffer yard is required between the industrial and single-dwelling residential zoning districts. And so they do have the landscaping provided on the outside of the fencing to provide additional buffer yard. As noted in the staff report, there are some administrative waivers that were approved, and with this coming before you tonight, we're asking that you reaffirm these waivers. One was from the buffer yard landscaping west of the access point on East Twelfth Street. And as I noted earlier, the access point on East Twelfth is being narrowed. These red lines show where the existing curb lines are. And on the bottom graphic, this shows the new area where curbing is being installed. However, this curbing is gonna be relatively narrow, because it's important to keep the access drive open around the building. It's not gonna be wide enough to allow both the construction of the five-foot-wide sidewalk and the required buffer yard landscaping. So the planning director reviewed, right now we have two code requirements that are competing for this area, and the planning director upon review decided that the sidewalk requirement would be more important to meet here than the buffer yard. One thing we looked at was the amount of additional landscaping that is being provided on the site overall, and the need for a continuous sidewalk along Twelfth Street. So an administrative waiver was approved from the requirement to provide trees and shrubs in this area. There's a permit or parking lot landscaping waiver also approved for this area for the same reason, there isn't enough area to provide the trees and the berm or the continuous shrub. There will be about two feet of landscaped area available along this sidewalk where they could do the landscaping. Another waiver was for the parking lot area that's within the site. This is located within the floodplain, and the city stormwater engineer did recommend that we allow that to be compacted gravel rather than requiring it to be asphalt. This reduces the amount of impervious surface that we're adding in the floodplain, and so the waiver was administratively approved from that requirement to allow gravel. And so we are requesting reaffirmation of these three administrative waivers. This was scheduled for your last week consideration, at your last week meeting. However, we received a letter from the neighborhood association that indicated they were concerned with the noise, the possible impacts of the outdoor activities at this site. And so this was deferred to allow staff, the applicant, and the neighborhood representatives time to discuss the situation and come up with possible measures to resolve this. There was a note on the site plan that limited hours in order to try to restrict the impact of the use on neighboring properties. However, at the meeting, these hours were further reduced to go between nine and six PM, or nine AM, six PM Monday through Friday, ten to four on Saturday, and to remove any Sunday hours. In addition, heavier production equipment, such as the sawmill or a wood chipper, if one was to be used, they don't plan on using one, but heavier outdoor equipment such as that, that would typically be louder than what you would expect, would be required to be located north of the north building line of that principal building. So this would separate it as far as possible from the residential properties on the south side of Twelfth Street. In addition, we have the fencing and the buffer yard landscaping that will help to buffer that when the landscaping is established. We did go back and forth and discuss this with the neighborhood association and with the applicant. They had requested perhaps setting limits on the number of days that the outdoor activity could occur. For instance, two days a month, they could use their outdoor production equipment. We asked if maybe a certain number of days a week would be acceptable to the applicant, but they didn't feel this allowed them the flexibility they needed in order to successfully operate their business. So we feel that these conditions, this condition, should effectively minimize the impact of noise while allowing that flexibility. So the action requesting today is to reaffirm the administrative waivers and the administrative approval of the site plan based on the findings in the staff report, and then subject to those revised conditions noted in today's staff memo that should, was added to your agenda rather late this afternoon. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I know that the applicant is present tonight.
Please.
Well, first of, first of all, I'm glad that we've held this over from last week to this week to try and get some agreements on the noise, because the last operation there was truly a nuisance to the neighborhood, and it was not, was not right. And I'm glad that we've gotten a chance to go through this. Now, this is, we've already rezoned the property, and this is a site plan. Do the agreements that we place on the site plan carry forward to other owners of the property if the property transfers, or do we have to go through the whole process again?
No, if the new use is still a construction, sales and service use, the site plan would remain the same, and these would be notes that are added to the site plan, so it doesn't matter who owns them with new ownership, they still apply.
Any other questions? Thank you. The applicant wanna speak at all?
Eric J. Restruct Restruct, and I'll just start by saying that, you know, the livelihood of our business is based around design and woodworking, and most of our projects start with material that we harvest in either log form or reclaimed material form. And a lot of what we do is milling, is to mill material for products for our projects. And Matt and I both feel that, you know, being restricted for a certain number of days a month, or even a lot fewer hours than what we are proposing, really handicaps our business in many ways, that we wouldn't be able to fulfill orders for people or complete projects for people. So, you know, we tried our best to meet with the neighborhood association and come to a mutual agreement, which we thought we had last Friday, on some hours of operation and restrictions that we felt good about, and that's what's being presented in the requested action. So, that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you.
I'm Matt Jones with Restruct Restruct. I think one of the things that's kind of nice about what we've done in the past is that our current shop is at nine twenty Delaware, and we've really been able to have a large impact on that neighborhood that I would say is positive. And we've operated in that neighborhood while kind of doing a lot of work that we thought made it an appealing place. And where, you know, we're fully aware of the relationship between our business and the community. I mean, it's a maintenance of housing kind of thing, though we do it with some spontaneity and creativity, that's our goal, is to have fun with it too. And that spontaneity is something that, you know, we use and need access to whatever our tools are at any minute. So the operation time, it's, we can't pinpoint when we need things. And I think that the noise that we create is maybe overestimated in this situation, but we know that we have a direct link to the community that we work in, and we appreciate that, that relationship, and as well as our employees who live in and around the same neighborhoods. So I just really think that, you know, our current location is a great example of impact in a neighborhood, or what impact we can have in a neighborhood. Thank you.
Question? Question? But you're okay with the compromise on hours that is presented?
Yes, yes. I think outside of that, I mean, if it were restricted to a certain number of days a month, I mean, those are just, that's, I think our business is too unpredictable to say something like that, but the hours I have no problem with.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Hi, I'm Andrea Ryapinski, I'm president of the Brook Creek Neighborhood Association. Mary did a nice job of summarizing the discussion we had with the city and Restruct Restruct last Friday. And, and we appreciated their time and Restruct Restruct's time in meeting with us. We, especially at the last minute. We did, last Friday, only make really minor changes to the original site plan, basically to restrict the hours and to move the activity to the north side of the building. And I guess we, upon, upon further discussion, we sent a follow-up email to Mary, which is, which is why she followed up with Restruct Restruct to ask about restricting the days of operation of the heavy equipment. And we ended up making that request because we, as happy as we are to communicate with Restruct Restruct and the city, we still left that meeting on Friday feeling a little vulnerable. And the way that the site plan is, is written right now and the, and the uses that are required, it would be possible to end up with a situation similar to what we had with a type of noise and use of machinery. We don't expect that from a Restruct Restruct. And, and one thing that's, that's much different now is that I think that it would be very easy for us to, to talk to Restruct Restruct directly if there are any problems. So we, we like them and we're really excited about their business plan in general, but we were hoping that they might have come to the table with additional assurances that would make us feel more comfortable with, with what'll go on in the future. But, but still, that being said, you know, we're feeling a little vulnerable, but we still like their project, and we don't want to be obstructive, but we're still hoping that there might have been more protections that could be offered to the neighborhood.
Okay. Thanks, Andrea.
I'd like to use the Almond, please. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Dever and Commissioners. My name is Michael Allman. Live at thirteen eleven Prairie in the Brook Creek Neighborhood. We've been generally very happy with this entire process from starting years ago and to this point, and we're looking forward to coming to a win-win situation for everybody. So I do wanna make a note when I, starting here, that under the general notes of the site plan, keep in mind that the owner is Bo Kilo on the site plan. So whatever we decide tonight is potentially is right. I understand the closing will be soon, but you never know, that's the future, there are also future potential owners. That said, when we considered, all of us here considered extensively the zoning at the planning commission and here at the city commission a number of months back, we very completely went through a whole list of uses that could happen under construction, sales and services, and the IL zoning. It was a very well-thought-out thorough process, except for one consideration. Under that particular zoning, there, there's a potential for equipment use that was very unclear at that time. And it's only recently come to light that one of those pieces of equipment will be a sawmill. When we discussed the zoning back then, the zoning was granted for that use, and the devil in the details, would it be worked out later, i.e. tonight, what the implications of that use, what could happen there? And what was discussed back then was that they needed the industrial zoning because they're going to be manufacturing furniture. That sounded good, you know, what's your image of furniture? It's putting legs on tables, sanding, finishing, putting drawers in, what have you. I don't feel that the full extent of what that meant was ever portrayed, and we only accidentally learned recently, just through being in a small community, that it was going to include a sawmill to manufacture the raw materials to make the furniture. That's very different than making furniture. Furniture, you take components off the shelf, assemble them, finish them. They are actually fabricating the raw materials into the furniture materials. To my way of thinking, that's a very different animal of manufacturing than what's allowed under construction, sales and services. None of this was ever revealed in any of the discussions with our neighborhood, in any discussions as far as I know with staff, because when I heard about this and I asked Mary Miller, she seemed not to be aware of their intent to have a sawmill. So I'm very concerned about that, because it's a piece of equipment that, and any other future piece of equipment, it's, it's open-ended. We don't know what the implications of that are. At the very least, I mean, I indicated when I commented at the planning commission that section twenty eleven oh one allows you to impose stricter restrictions. Thank you. And that could be outright prohibition, time constraints, or location or site constraints. Mary Miller has proposed location constraints. That's only a hundred feet north of the, of the street, only a hundred feet. I would suggest that as a manufacturing use, that not be allowed on this site. They don't do it on their current site. They don't have a sawmill there. They function perfectly fine and meet their orders. They do it at a remote site.
Okay.
They can fulfill their business just as easily. So I would say that either prohibit it entirely or limit it to certain days of the month. Beyond that, the buffer zone is only fifteen feet, type-three buffer zones can be up to twenty-five feet, and I think that should be a consideration for noise as well. So I'll stop there, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Michael.
I forgot to show you the pictures.
Additional public comment?
At the end.
Yeah, when we're done with the comments, I wanna make sure we get other people's viewpoints. Any other public comment?
Hi. I just think it's getting...
Hey. There's no speaking out at the meeting unless you're at the podium or up here. That's kind of the rule.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm glad I can be here tonight. I think overall, the project is, is wonderful. I like it much better than what was taking place. However, I will share the concerns that Andrea and Michael have brought to your attention. But I think, of course, what they intend to do there, and I have seen a lot of their work, and I think it's awesome, so. But sawmills, yes, they can make a lot of noise, they can create a lot of dust, but I just want you to know, that's what I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, the applicant needed to explain something.
I just wanted to let Michael know that where we actually located the sawmill on the site plan is actually three hundred feet from Twelfth Street with a type-three buffer zone between that. And last night after, you know, I read through these series of emails that were between Mary and I and Brian and the neighborhood, I started doing a little research, you know, decibel levels for a sawmill compared to some other standard things that go on everyday activities. And a sawmill's about eighty-five decibels. A lawnmower is a hundred and ten decibels. So basically, you know, they're asking us to restrict something that landscape businesses do every day for eight hours a day and make a living doing that. So I don't, I don't see how, it's a valid argument. And also, you know, a child screaming is about a hundred and ten decibels. And if you wanna restrict someone to have a child out in their yard playing or yelling for two hours or two days a month, you know, I'd let them speak to their parents about it. I think that, you know, what they're asking is quite restrictive, and if they, you know, if they're worried about how loud a sawmill is, you can look it up on YouTube, you can be within twenty feet of one and have a conversation with someone. So it's not as loud as they're making it out to be.
Got it, thank you.
Excuse me, could you, could you show us on the, on the site plan, that the staff can put that up for us, where you're anticipating locating this sawmill?
So... This is the, the north edge of the existing building, which will have our equipment in. This number six up here... This number six up here is where we are proposing to put the sawmill. And, and that's something we, you know, agreed to do based on correspondence, correspondence we had with the neighborhood. That location, about where that arrow is, where that number six tag is, is three hundred feet from twelfth street. And not to mention this extremely dense buffer yard that we're going to have to create. And there's a building between twelfth street and the sawmill as well. It, it's just not going to be that noisy. I mean, it's, the cars driving by through their neighborhood are noisier than that sawmill's going to be.
Is the sawmill outside?
It's portable. And so we've, you know, that's something we've also talked to Mary about, you know, storm, we can, it's not going to be a permanent fixture out in the yard, so we can put it in our, our shop when it's not in use, because it will need to be taken to certain locations and mill material as well at some point.
Is there a pad there or something that you put the sawmill on?
No, it's on hydraulic jack's adjustable feet, so to speak. I mean, it's basically a, I think unfortunately, the image they have in their head is this big production line type thing and it's not. It's a sixteen to twenty-foot trailer that is basically an oversized bandsaw. It's got maybe a thirteen to twenty-two horsepower motor that just doesn't produce a whole lot of energy.
Eric, I, I don't know if this is for you, if it's for staff, but the addition of item F in the staff report talks about general equipment shall be limited in location to the, to north of the north wall of the principal building. Is it where point number six is, is that quite a ways from the north wall?
It is. As we, as we spoke last Friday with the applicant and the neighborhood representatives, we started thinking about different options, different ways to address the, mitigate the noise issue. And we start talking about the differences in the equipment type. And so like a skid loader that needs to get around the entire property while it can create some noise shouldn't be limited necessarily to north of that north building line, but some of the equipment has potential to be noisier. And so we tried to make the distinction between general outdoor equipment and the heavier use equipment, letting the general equipment be really anywhere outside, given the restrictions in hours of operation, and the heavier use equipment being both limited in hours of operation and a further distance away from the residences.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. So, do any commissioners have any concerns or questions about the proposed changes agreed upon by Brook Creek Neighborhood Association, some of the other neighbors, and the applicant?
I've got one question. I meant to ask Mary about, somewhere in here, we had a discussion about a continuation of the multi-use path or the, or sidewalk or some such situation to the east, isn't that correct?
Right. There's two discussions going on. The one that applies to this is that continuous sidewalk along twelfth street. And it'll be installed here along this property and then when the property to the east plats and develops with residences, it'll be extended along twelfth street. The multi-use path is a connection from the path over here through the parkland and that is being worked out with the city parks and recreation department. It's not a part of this project. They did donate some land or are donating some land to the city to make it possible for perhaps extension of a shared use path up in this location, but the only pathway we're looking at here is that sidewalk along twelfth street.
Okay. So, can you show me again with the, the mouse, where the multi-use pathways?
I believe it comes over here now. This is where it extends. And then we have parkland in this area and it's got this little, when they donate the land, they've cut out this little piece. This goes along with the open space land. This is where it may be possible to have a shared use path, but they haven't made determinations yet. That would be between the parks, recreation department, the property, and more than likely the neighborhood to discuss where the shared use path would be best.
So is there land available from where the, the pointer is now back down to the west on Haskell?
This is, I believe it would come in, this is city-owned property here and would cross the creek here and then go on in here. So they have, they've gotten what they need for the donation if it gets extended to this location.
I knew we had the discussion, I just didn't see it on the site plan, so.
Right. It's kind of a separate discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Pushing on spike pass through. This for the applicant, Eric, Matt, one of you. The closing, the closing of the property, it was brought up a little bit ago, is you're going to close subject to final approval of everything?
We are. And it was actually supposed to happen last week. There was a minor glitch and so we're just waiting on the title work to be completed and the Supreme.
Right.
No, go ahead. I, I think as, you know, as a commissioner, we want to pay heed to any questions, any concerns that the public has. I think in this particular case, being a woodworker, woodworker myself, spending the whole afternoon doing that, I have a good understanding of noise that comes from this. I can tell you the place that's next to us, every year, they have a skill saw and they have a router that probably makes about the same amount of noise, but it's much different situation in the fact that the timber and the quality of that is, is much different than a bandsaw. And the, the type of sound that a bandsaw does is, is, is really much different. It's not as irritating, it's not as bothersome, it doesn't carry, it's much lower pitched. So I think there is some reality there that, that I think that the neighbors have concerns, but I don't think a saw in this particular situation is going to create a noise that would be unpleasant for them and would cause significant problems. So I, I, I think it's good for them to voice that, but at the same time, I think the applicant has done a good job of, of discussing that, both with the, the amount of sound, but also the, I, I think it's just as important, the, the timber and the quality of the sound is just as important in this situation. This is much different, much lower pitched. Having a bandsaw myself and using that, it really is not an offensive thing and I, I think in this particular case, the staff and the applicant and the neighbors have come together and created a good situation. Nothing is perfect, but I think this is an adequate one and one that protects the citizens, but at the same time allows us to be business friendly and let someone do something that is good. Restructuring and using timber, we cut down a tree in our front yard, they brought in a portable saw just like they're going to use and cut the tree down. So it's, it's, it's something that can happen anywhere in the city. And I think in this particular case, we're on good stand to allow this to occur.
Okay.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
Just want to thank the work of the neighborhood, the applicant and the staff of the multiple hours and I know all the work and concerns of everybody that's been involved in, in putting together this site plan and, and, and every piece of it. You know, as a site that, just going into that site and realizing the problems that, you know, had been in the past, I know that there would have been a lot of concern, I suppose, on my end. Making the commitment of placing a new business there, but I do want to congratulate the applicant in, in the work that, that they're about to move and, and I assume make their operation a little bit bigger. I do agree with Commissioner Riordan that, you know, that it's kind of hard to make a site perfect, but I do know this last weekend that there was a guy south of our neighborhood here, or south where I live, and, I mean, he had a planer and, and, you know, it was just a standard household planer and, I mean, it was singing. But, you know, the, the, again, the noise is different than what's going to happen, you know, at this site. I appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood in bringing forth the, the concerns that they have and, and again, I appreciate the staff and the applicant in trying to work through all of those to come up with some suitable, you know, end of this project and the beginning of a business, a new business this location. So, thanks again for everybody's hard work. This is something that I believe I can support with the addition of the conditions that have been placed.
Okay. Any other comments? Very good. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the site plan subject to the conditions laid out in the staff report dated two eighteen fourteen.
Second? Motion by Vice Mayor Amix, second by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thanks for coming, everybody. At this moment, I'm going to pass over the gap to you. You have a week to go. I'll be a little bit over there. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to have to check out for right now. I'll call you in a moment.
Diane, please note in the minutes that Mayor Dever had to leave at whatever time it is, seven fifteen?
Daughter's birthday.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider authorizing the distribution of a joint city, University of Kansas request for proposal for consulting services to evaluate the feasibility of a conference center. Dave?
Vice Mayor Commissioners, you have a staff memorandum before you, the, the draft request for proposals, a letter from the chancellor and some information that Diane put together in regards to Manhattan's recent efforts in regards to a, a conference center. I'll briefly walk through the memorandum, provide a little bit of comment and then await any questions that you may have. I think the commission is, is well aware that the visitor industry is an important industry nationwide and also in our community. Fred Conboy, who heads up Destination Management, Inc. and our Convention and Visitors Bureau is here. We know that that's an important segment of the community, important economic base. I recall that when we last looked at our sales tax, I think we determined that thirty percent of our sales tax dollars come from visitors, people that live outside of Warrens. Now, that may be people in Douglas County, but generally we know that we also attract a lot of people from outside of the county and outside of our region to come to our, our community. We've had, in recent times, discussion about the infrastructure that is necessary for this industry. The primary support that we have provided has been through our Convention and Visitors Bureau, the use of guest tax funds, the additional tax that we collect on the lodging industry to provide for marketing and also for, in some cases, event support. A number of communities, and we can talk at length about that, have also been more involved in this area and that is providing some level of financial support for this industry primarily through facilities. We as a community have provided some level of public incentives for a number of lodging facilities in the community. You're familiar with the Marriott property that is coming in at Ninth and New Hampshire, the Spring Hill Suite next door and our support for the parking lot next door, the Holodome had industrial revenue bonds, the Eldridge did. So we, we've been involved in that industry in the, in the past. I'll, I'll move along. One of the things that a number of communities have done is then look at whether or not they want to provide meeting space, conference space, convention opportunities as well. And I believe that it's appropriate to ask that question with a little bit more rigor and also join with the University of Kansas in asking that question. KU has been going through a very extensive master planning process for their built environment. One of the items that they have looked at is a conference center. They see the need in their uses and they've actually talked about locations on their campus in regards to that issue. We've been fortunate enough to be invited to be part of that master planning process. I know that Mayor Dever and I attended a, a meeting and indicated that the city would be of interest, interested in cooperating with KU in regards to, to studying that, that issue because we see an opportunity to cooperate and work with them in, in regards to that. The hospitality industry, probably like most industries, has a cohort of qualified consultants that help that industry and then also help municipalities looking at that industry and how they would be involved in it. I've had an opportunity to read a number of feasibility reports that the consultants have put together for facilities around the country. In, in Diane's memo, you see some of the information that the consultant provided for Manhattan's inquiry as well. So what I'm recommending is, is that we send out a request for proposals to see if there is interest, and I think there will be, from the consulting industry to provide us with a level of services to ask a number of questions. Is such a conference center feasible in this community? What is the likelihood of success? Give us some idea about location criteria. What are some of the best practices in regards to the public-private relationship that is usually part of these arrangements? Got a number of other questions here as well and obviously you'll see the contract and, and the scope of, of any work that would proceed. KU has indicated their interest in a, a joint study, been working with Barry Swanson in the provost's office and appreciate his work along with others. They've indicated that they would be willing to not only participate, but also financially participate in a contractual arrangement with a consulting firm to help in this regard. Want to make it very clear that our engagement of a consultant, our receipt of their proposal is by no means an assurance or an acceptance that we're going to proceed any further with any type of financial involvement. I think it is likely that we will get proposals from the development community in this regard, whether it's downtown, I'm familiar with Clinton Lake. We're in the process of looking at the, the viability of moving the oriented tanks next to the alumni center that might free up some, some property as well. So there's any number of different locations and any number of different opportunities. I think it's, it's been well said that we've got a number of capital items on our plate. I don't see this as ranking higher, for example, than the public safety needs in our police department for our new headquarters. We're very familiar with the water and wastewater infrastructure needs that we have. Those are funded not through likely funding sources here, which would be geo debt, but through water and wastewater rates, but we have to be mindful of, of, of all of our debt capacity as well. I point out to the commission that this is likely to be a, a study and a discussion that can take some time, but if we have good data, if we have facts, if we have a relationship with a consulting expert that can help us see issues, maybe do good forecasting, maybe look around a few corners that maybe we haven't thought of in this regard, we'll be ahead of that in regards to our discussion. A number of communities have moved forward in this area. The, the Manhattan facility, I think, is quite impressive for the size of that. That community, it took them a number of years to get that facility. We're familiar with the facility in Topeka that's near the expo center, familiar with Aletha that is getting ready to proceed with some meeting space room. We hear discussions about possible facility at the Legends. It's not inappropriate to recognize that other communities are, are moving forward and I think that's going to be a key element of the, of the consultant's work, which is to help us look at that and see whether or not we have any means of, of participating in that market, given what's happened in, in other communities. So I think this would be money well spent to engage a, a consultant in this area. Your action tonight doesn't financially commit you to anything, but it does ask for proposals back with the, the belief that we would eventually successfully negotiate a contract with the selected consultant. It's going to be concurrent review and approval process, you all approving the selection and the contract and similarly with the University of Kansas as well. Be happy to respond to questions. I'm, I'm trying to provide a, a general highlight of all these things. We haven't by any means worked out what their, their relationship would be with, with KU. They indicated that they thought that it would be appropriate for us to drive the process. the process, and so I've taken that on, and, and that's why you see this on, on your agenda, and why it's been drafted through this means, and it would follow our procurement process. So be happy to respond to questions and comments.
Questions of staff? No, I, I think this is fairly straightforward, and it's, it's something that we need to look into, and that's all that we're doing. So I think to, to continue in this, we can always decide not to later, but I think we need to go forward at this point. Public comment on this item? Any public comment on the RFP? Okay. Back to the commission then?
I think it, I, I think it's reasonable at this point to look at this item, to send the RFP out. Dave, I appreciate your comments about the public safety facilities that we're looking at. I think that, you know, that's something that we've kind of hinted at that, that we will decide before we do, you know, much other things right now, and I think that that's important. So that's kind of where I'm at, so. Anyway, anything else?
I guess my biggest concern would be location, because the university might have a completely different weighted system than we would as, as a city, but I think it's still, at the same time, that can be ironed out and recognized. Bob, you have anything?
Well, that's, I, I agree, Terry, but that's some of the information we're probably gonna get back with the, with the research that the consultant did. I think it's time to take a look at it. Really, the tourist industry is the best, cleanest, rechargeable industry you can, you can find. If you get in the convention business or the conference business, it's new people, new faces, new heads on beds, every, every week. So they come to town, charged up and wanna shop and do things, and eat out, and spend money, and generate sales tax. So I think it's a, a good operation for us. So I'd move approval to sending out the RF, was it RFI?
RFP, sir.
RFP, to see which consultant may be interested in working with us.
Okay, I have a motion to hear second?
Second.
Motion made in the second to direct staff to distribute the request for proposals for consulting service made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes four-zero. Next, Ed. General public comment, general public comment this evening. Yes, sir. Come to the podium.
Me?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm pleased to be able to meet with you.
And if we could have your name too, sir?
Les Blevins, a county resident. Longtime family here in Douglas County. I'm fifth generation, Douglas County resident. My great-great-grandmother came in the eighteen-sixties, I think it was. Mike's grandfather gave me my first haircut about nineteen forty.
There we go.
He's been in the business a long time, too. What I want to propose has global implications. But to start with, I'd like to say that I project it would save the city of Lawrence something on the order of one million dollars per year. Notice that's savings, not expenditure. Big difference here. I know you all like to spend money, but I'm gonna offer you the chance to save some money on, for the city, mostly through reduced disposal fees, but there's other aspects of that, too. I believe the city of Lawrence could and should support a demonstration of the alternative in renewable energy technology I've invented, designed, patented, and developed for addressing some of the cities and the nation's unmet needs, and to enable the clean energy economy to take root across the nation, and put Lawrence on that, on the map of that. I spoke with the city manager today briefly, and he suggested that I appear and make this project proposal known to y'all in person. This comes after over a decade since Mayor Hack was in the seat of the mayor. We know the city commission members do not have enough information, when I say we, I think that's Dave and myself speaking there. We know that the members do not have enough information on exactly what my proposal entails to make an informed decision at, at any, you know, immediate, short-term way. And I think he knows, if, Dave, if I made such a proposal, the members of the commission would be unsure, unable, and unwilling to make a decision on the proposal based only on what my beliefs are without substantial input from a well-qualified consultant, engineering firm, or research university, or somebody else. So I'm essentially requesting at this time that, that the city further consider retaining counsel of some sort to advise the city on what my proposal might produce over time. Three quotes here I'd like to report. "There are risks and costs to any program of action, but they can be far less than the long-range risks and costs of inaction." That was President John F. Kennedy's statement. "It is in our vital interest to diversify America's energy supply, and the way forward is through technology." That's President George W. Bush in his two thousand seven State of the Union address. "Biofuels will play an important role in the, in America's clean energy portfolio. These projects will allow us to decrease our dependence on foreign oil, support the growth of biofuels industry, and create jobs here at home." Energy Secretary Steven Schu was on that one. Thanks to Mike's effort, I do have a copy of a letter here, if anybody'd like to see it. The city's position, this is signed by Mike Amix and Mike Dever, Dever, excuse me.
We have a copy of that, Les, so.
You have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, here's what I would like for you to do. I, I, I would like for you to write down exactly what you want us to consider. I mean, exactly what you want us to consider. Get it to me, get it to Dave. I'll meet with Mayor Dever about a time that appropriate to place this on the agenda, and, so you can get an answer, you know, one way or another from the commission, okay?
I have a little issue with that. I'd like to.
No, that's how we do this.
I, I, I don't know how to articulate this exactly as you would like to see it. I, I think this is something we should discuss and sort out. The, the importance of it goes beyond, I'm, I didn't cause global warming on my own, and I don't propose to, to fix it on my own, but to enable humanity to do that in conjunction with what the city can bring forth. There's oodles of information out there. This document here says, "Why a four degrees centigrade warmer world must be avoided." That's what I propose to put Lawrence on the track to enabling. This is something that exceeds the issue of slavery, which Lawrence was instrumental in ending. This is, slavery was a national issue, global warming is an international issue. So I will do my best to do what you just requested. Just don't expect it to be the, the end-all letter. You, once before, you asked me to summarize this in a one-page thing, and I think I did that and handed it to you. I don't know if you still have a copy of that or not, but, but, well, anyway. Would you state your request again, that, for what you want me to do?
You're, you're asking the commission to consider a, a proposal of yours. All we need to know is exactly what the proposal is.
Retain some sort of counsel.
Okay.
Consultant, research university, engineering firm, whatever you choose, to look at what I'm proposing, and.
But you're asking us to invest the money.
Well, I don't think this has to cost money. The city has.
Well.
Engineers, and the, and KU has qualified people to do some assessment and, and advise the city. Now, how much that costs, I don't know. We may be talking about three thousand dollars, we may be talking about thirty thousand, depends on the scope of it.
Okay. Well, send us the letter, make in specific requests, or as close as you can, and, and we'll consider that item, okay?
Address it to?
Address it to Mayor Dever, City Manager's office.
Mr. Dever, just work to City Manager's office, and we'll communicate with Commissioners.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I'll say if anybody might want to add a question.
No. That, when it's on the agenda, you'll have, I imagine, a couple of questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Future agenda items, Dave? Any future agenda items?
We are, Scott, we're working on the rental registration items, and Scott's got a calendar for that. Is that, or we're almost there?
We're almost there. We're confirming a public meeting forum date.
Okay. And then, I think we're still working with Commissioner Farmer to tidy up all of the different documents, and then we're gonna get it to everybody, and you'll see his proposal and, and then the outline of items. So I think that's where we are on that. The EPA parking study, we're working to also have that in conjunction with Traffic Safety Commission recommendation for Edgehill Road. Remember our permit parking, that that is kind of somewhat related, so. I think we've got, I know I'm working on a few other agenda items for, for next week. I think we have the staff recommendation for the fifty thousand dollars for the historic preservation items, and I think we'll probably have, I guess this is an RFP month, have the RFP for eleven oh six Rhode Island property that we acquired through eminent domain. We want you to look and see, we want you to see all of that before we go ahead and get that set up.
Is, is the appeal time over for that property?
I believe the appeal time is over as far as the, the dollar amount. We own the property. We've gone in, I think we've secured it, and I believe the Barlins actually moved some of their property out. Is that correct?
Okay, so there was no appeal?
There was no appeal on the dollar amount. That's correct.
Good.
Okay. Bob, just so you know, we're, we're, we're looking to have the, the rental registration stuff on the agenda on March twenty-fifth. So, that's the, the date. Thank you.
Okay. Commission item? Any commission item? Any commission item?
Nope.
Okay. Calendar?
On everything?
Bob, you're gonna do that thing for Mike on Thursday?
I'll, I'll do it, yeah. I don't know what it is, but I'll do it.
You want me to do your ribbon cutting?
If, if you want to, 'cause I've got an MPO meeting that afternoon, too.
Is it four-thirty?
Yeah, I think so, it's.
Well, Dave, just have Bobby send me that ribbon cutting on Thursday.
The, this Thursday?
Yeah, whatever it is.
That's right, here. It's Trill, Truity Credit Union.
Okay.
Four-thirty, okay.
Okay.
Thirty-six.
Trudy Credit Union?
Just ever.
So you're gonna do that?
Yeah, just ever send me a note, and I'll do that.
Okay. And then I've got an MPO meeting at two-thirty on the schedule.
Okay. The only other thing on, on calendar, Commissioners, is that I think we sent you a draft budget calendar, and I, and, you know, Commissioner Shum has responded with some of his plans during budget season. If there's anybody else that's got a lockdown that they're gonna not be available for a, a particular time, any time, then we'll, we'll try and move things around to the extent that we, since that we can, to get a maximum participation on it.
Right now, I just have that wedding in the fall.
In September. We'll, we'll be done by September, so.
Okay.
You getting married, Mike?
No, but I know a young man that is. In fact, it is his birthday, so anyway. Any other calendar items? Entertaining motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn. Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Farmer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all. So what was it? What was this?